Yeah, I'm reading on the Zoom platform. Eric, would you say to pledge allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Public comment. This is a period of time where members of the public can speak to the commission. Likely have you speak for three minutes? Yeah. So is there anybody like to speak? Okay, moving right along. Has everybody had a chance to review the ads?
I had.
Chair entertain a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
It's moved by Commissioner All. Second by Commissioner Paul. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The street is zero. We received a EMS Commission Report for September 2020. We'll file, receive and file. New business before the board. The first order of business, I'd like to I'd like to untable the Sparks. Sorry, untable the untable the panic button discussion. Do I have a motion to table it?
To untable it? I will make the motion to untable that.
By Commissioner All, do I have a second?
My second.
All, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, as the street is zero. I have two purchase orders here for the panic alarm. Kim, do you want to say something about it?
The panic alarm upgrade through Secure Tech for the Abston County, the total purchase is eighteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five. That would be to upgrade all of our panic alarms to be current and up to date.
Okay, now, Kim, what is JT Communications? Is that part of it?
What is what?
JT Communications?
JT Communications?
Right, this, I'm sorry, there's two purchase orders here.
Yes, one is for the eight hundred radios. We have to have the APX nine hundred portables. Those go inside of the panic alarm boxes. And one is at the clerk's office and one is located at community corrections.
That's thirty-four hundred and eight dollars ninety-eight cents.
Correct.
So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the JT Communications, a panic alarm upgrade of eighteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. And two portable radio units for the upgrade for thirty-four hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. I have a motion.
I saw a move, Mr. Chairman.
About Commissioner Paul.
I will say.
No, any further discussion? During that, I said, all those in favor.
Kim had something.
Commissioner Bauer, I think when you're saying JT Communications, that's joint communications. That's the department. We have Secure Tech is the vendor and Motorola.
Okay.
Is that?
So it is the vendor name is Secure Tech for eighteen one hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the Motorola solution is thirty-four hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. That correction. What? I forgot where I went. We had a motion. We have a motion. Eric made the motion?
Yes, Bill made the mo- and I second it. But do we have to correct that since it was, do we need a new motion since it's been?
Want to correct that? Go ahead, Eric. The motion would be, let me, let me go ahead and read it again. The motion would be Secure Tech eighteen hundred thousand, eighteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. That would be for the upgrade. And the radio upgrade would be the Motorola solutions, thirty-four hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Do I have a motion?
I saw a move, Mr. Chairman.
By first of all, seconded by
I will.
Anything to discuss? During that, I said, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Moving right along.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you guys do up there. Supposedly we don't see very often. Um. I have a grant application. It's for emergency management. It's the application for emergency management performance grant. This is presented by Emergency Management. I would, chair would entertain a motion to approve the chairman signing the emergency management performance grant.
Also move.
Moved by Commissioner All, seconded by Commissioner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 We had a conversation this morning in regard to our election next week. There is so much going on and so many unknowns. We are thinking about canceling our meeting for next week. It just is so difficult for them to help us conduct a meeting on Tuesday and do the election. And chances are they may be staying up all night on on Tuesday night. So even Wednesday wasn't a good day. So the chair would entertain a motion to cancel the meeting for November third.
Also move.
Moved by
I'll second it.
By Commissioner Paul, any further comment? Any questions?
I'm always reluctant to cancel a meeting, but in this case, I've seen how busy they are in that election office. It's, it's the whole week, this week, Monday is bad. You know, there's not a good time to, to move it to. So that's the reason I made the motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 So I will see you guys next week. Okay, Justin All, your
Okay, good afternoon, gentlemen. I bring to you today the purchase orders that we discussed this morning. One is for a rotary boom mower, which would fit on our tractor, be in a three-point hitch. It's removable, which would allow us to utilize that newer, new Holland tractor that we currently have the side mount mower on, which is not not easily removable. It's quite the process. But that one is for the amount of thirty-one thousand nine eighty-nine, which would include the installation at their facility at Murphy Tractor in Topeka. So I, it would, and it would allow us to do roadside tree clearing, which is needed right now. Currently, we're doing it with just pole saws and manually. And it does have just a single joystick. That installation is also included. It would allow us to shred branches and material up to about eight inches in diameter. Yes, sir. Did you have?
That would mean that if we purchase this, that the road and bridge will have to remove the mower that's already there and then transport the tractor to, and, and are we transporting it both directions after we take it to the location and?
That price for their transport was not included. So yes, we, we would be transporting it. And we do have the trailer and the truck to and, you know, boomer chains and everything to be able to do it. So.
And that's without trade?
That is without trade. Yes, yes. So, but we could, I, I could talk to Wes and see if we could get some video of the, of the mower working on the existing tractor and some pictures and try to sell it on, you know, Purple Wave or outright to the public. There's just not a, not a large demand for those types of side mount mowers, mostly public agencies, from what I understand.
Tell them, tell them you abide. If they come get the tractor and they bring the tractor and mower back to us.
How long did you say?
I say tell Murphy Tractor, whatever, you would buy the mower, but they are to come get our tractor, put the mower on and bring the tractor back to Arbor Celtic. Get truckin' out of them.
Okay. All right. Oh, I'll see if I can get that added to it. As far as I know, though, from what the quote entailed, that did not currently include it. So. I mean.
It don't cost nothing to ask, Justin.
No, no, agreed, agreed. I'll do it.
We're, you got several purchase orders here. Then I think we should take them one at a time. So the chair will entertain a motion. Just, the vendor would be Murphy Tractor, Tractor, Topeka. The mower would be thirty-one thousand nine eighty-eight twenty-nine. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second that. I'll second it.
Any further discussion? I think, you know, people might wonder why we're buying a mower in November. This mower can actually be used all winter. We really have a lot of trees hanging over the road, especially we get a lot of them done during, before the end of harvest, it'll really be helpful. So it's, it's something that can be used year round. It's like, it isn't for mowing grass. It's for cutting trees. So that's important.
You're absolutely correct. And this is actually prime time season for, for that type of activity for us. So.
Okay. So the chair would entertain a motion. Oh, sorry, we already had the motion. Any more discussion? Hearing that, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Moving right along, Justin.
Yes, sir. So as we discussed this morning, I'm going to seek some additional information on, and some additional options for a, an actual ten-foot mower to better mow the roadsides. We currently have a fifteen-foot mower. And in a large portion of the county, it's not necessarily as feasible to try and pull a fifteen-foot mower along some of our roadsides. And you, you all know, you've been around the county enough, I'm sure, that if you've got a fifteen-foot mower behind a tractor, it's some of our shoulders are very steep. And some of the ditches out to the, to the fields and to the fences, we don't even have that much right away to be able to stick a fifteen-foot mower along the road. So we, we have looked at converting, there's a conversion kit from John Deere that is fifty-three hundred dollars. I said forty-three hundred this morning, I believe. It's fifty-three hundred dollars to convert it from a fifteen-foot mower to a ten-foot mower. That would still give us the option in the future to convert it back to a fifteen-foot if we so desired. But I will seek, as we discussed this morning, I will seek some additional options as far as pricing for a new mower and used mower, ten-foot width. That would, that would give us better opportunities and be more effective in mowing our roadsides. So I will get back to you on that. We'll take that one off the, off the table for now. And also, we'll look at some additional options on pricing for used and other, other available Ford five fifty trucks. Yes, sorry, Bill, I missed you there. Would.
Was that fifteen bat wing mower used out at the county lake?
We have, but not as much recently. Just, we have two zero turns and we can, we can move a lot faster. And, and it's, it's a lot easier mobility around some of the trees and stuff out there. But some of the thicker areas, yes. And we, we also use it out at the transfer station to mow it.
So it has some, it has some value to it. So we don't want to give it away.
No, no, no. If we could get a, I mean, potentially a trade-in or, you know, another option, maybe the conversion kit, whatever works out best. It's just a little bit bigger than probably, I mean, if we were mowing a KDOT right-of-way roadside where they've got seventy-five feet on each side of the road, then maybe it'd make more sense. But to me at least anyway. But the other, the other thing I brought up was we looked at a two thousand nine F five fifty from Fleck, Fleeks and Flex in Wasena. It's got quite a few miles on it, but it's only nine thousand dollars. We have looked at some others. We looked at one that was I think it had maybe ninety thousand miles on it. It was for forty-one thousand dollars. We looked at a new one that was sixty, sixty-six, sixty-eight thousand dollars. It had five thousand miles on it. So we have looked around at, at some different options currently, as you, as we discussed earlier this morning, is our, our current five fifty that we use to was being used to cold patch and, and snowplow and sand and salt in some of these smaller parking lots that we can't get a dump truck into. It needs a new engine and turbos and the whole works. It was priced at over twenty thousand dollars to have that repaired. And it, it needs some other, just incidental, I guess, work and repairs done to it too. So so we did, we did consider making repairs to that one. It's got a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it. So I will table that one as well. And I apologize for, if I've wasted your time on those two items, but I will go back and look at some additional options to try to get the county the best benefit here on both of those. But that five fifty is something that it would be, we, you don't have to have a CDL to drive it either. There's the other benefit to that. So, and you, and we can still do a little bit of hauling with it. So it has a lot of benefits to it. Regardless of which option that, that we end up hopefully going with. But I will, I'll get back to you on that. The other last final item that I had for review and approval is the replacement of Bridge F dot zero twelve dot four. It is southeast of Effingham. It's one that was previously submitted for the KL BIP program. That's their quote-unquote short bridge program. It's bridges that are less than fifty feet for replacement. We got granted that last year. It is ninety percent. KDOT will pay ninety percent contribution from KDOT, ten percent local, up to a hundred and fifty thousand. And the previous estimate that was done by Schwab Eaton was, it was two hundred and seventy-six thousand and, and change. And that was for, that was for the, the, the design, the permitting, the construction and the and the actual inspection to KDOT standards. I've gotten an estimate for the permitting, the design and the construction from Husker Steel. It's actually Norfolk Contracting through Husker Steel. But they have estimated, given us a proposal for a hundred and six thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. And I would like to seek approval on that. They are currently working on replacing four of our bridges in the county and have finished one. They're on their second one. As I mentioned previously this morning, is the only thing that would need to be done with that would be to coordinate that with the upcoming KDOT Cost Chair Bridge Replacement that is eleven dot nine F dot three. And they are right around the corner from each other. And in order to do both, we would have to coordinate one prior to the other one or following the other one in order to not completely isolate people and put them on an island. Yes, sir?
Have we got the right-of-way act done or already approved for this one?
Well, sir, no, not yet.
We need to get that started. That seems to always be a hang-up for us is to get that right-of-way.
And I'm not sure that we would need additional right-of-way for this one.
That's what I was going to say. I think the engineer's estimate was that we did not need additional right-of-way.
I believe.
That's a bonus.
Chair would entertain a motion to vendor Norfolk Contracting, Norfolk, Nebraska. These guys have done a lot of projects, we've seen, fully familiar, to replace Bridge F dot zero dash twelve dot four for a price of a hundred and six thousand eight ninety-four. Do I have a motion? Commissioner All, seconded by Commissioner Paul. Any further discussion? During that, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Passes three to zero.
I, I guess I, one last item of, of business that I had today was the, there's a certified public manager program that KU, Kansas University is, is holding. It is a cost of thirty-six hundred dollars and it would be twice a month on Tuesdays from, I believe, nine o'clock to three o'clock. And it's a virtual, they have a, they have an online Zoom class. But it would, I believe, provide some additional, additional training and education and management experience. For myself, I would like to take this. It's from January fifth through November ninth of twenty twenty-one. I, I think it would also give us some additional networking with other, other public agencies and public management directors.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve a thirty-six hundred dollar educational expense. It's been moved by Commissioner.
I saw a move.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner All. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Have fun at school, Justin.
Thank you, thank you. That was all I had today, gentlemen. Do you have anything for me?
Thank you.
And support. I appreciate it.
Next thing on the agenda is the Health Department Halloween Guidance. I'll put it up on the screen if I can find it. That's about it.
I had it, but I lost it.
Same here.
There it is. Right. My mouse won't work. What do we got on the screen? My mouse is just I'm just seeing the regular meeting.
Okay, let me strike straight. I lost my
for some reason, my mouse. Okay, so we want to, we want to go over the recommended Halloween activities for twenty twenty for the Northeast Kansas Multi-City Department, Inc. If, these are the things that are not recommended. Gathering events or parties with, with non-hassle members. Carnivals, festivals, live entertainment and haunted house attractions. Door-to-door trick-or-treating, difficult to make proper social distance and ensure that everyone's properly wearing face covering. Traveling to other counties to attend fall festivals, trunk-or-treating, difficult to avoid crowding and sharing. So recommendation, these are things that are not recommended. Recommended are correctly wear a cloth face covering to prevent disease spread. Avoid confined spaces during indoor spaces and do not allow crazy social distancing. Practice social distancing. Practice regular hand washing, wash often with soap and water or hand sanitizer, sanitizer to at least sixty percent alcohol. Clean frequently touched items. Guides for home acceptance trick-or-treaters. Wear a face covering when answering the door or coming into contact with others. Wash hands in regular intervals. Sanitize frequently touched items regularly. Do not use grab balls. Consider placing items in your yard or six foot apart on your porch. In the vice, gets to take one replenishment. These are the guidance that has come from the Health Department. The chair will entertain. I, I think we want to have a motion to, to support the county health department on this particular thing. Eric?
I, I just wanted to add that, that, that's just the COVID recommendations. There's a lot of precautions. I, I don't see anything about lighting or wearing light-colored costumes and stuff if we're going out in the dark. So this is just the COVID additional beyond the normal things that we need to do to stay safe on a dark night.
Right. And I think I got my I think I have my see my screen now?
It's buffering. There we go.
Okay, so I read it off, so I just want the public to be able to say this is something that was issued on September thirtieth. I'm going to call for a motion versus support on the Northeast Kansas Multi-City Home Department on this recommendation. Or things are not recommended. There are recommendations. There's guides for homes, accepted trick-or-treaters.
I'll make the motion to accept it.
I have a second.
I'll second it. But I feel that we're going to have some people that want to make comments before we vote.
So it's moved by Commissioner All, seconded by Commissioner Paul. Are there any further questions? Hearing that, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Three to zero. Next, we need to have an executive session. So I would make the motion that the Board Accounting Commission recessed the executive session at one thirty to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seven-five dash four-three nineteen P one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. The executive session been conducted in a breakout room using the Zoom platform. The public will come on a executive session at one forty-five PM. The meeting will then go back into process. Those present will be the commissioners, county councilor Pat Henderson and HR director Jamie Madison. So we're going to, do I have a motion to approve the executive session?
Also move.
Moved by Commissioner All.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 On the executive session.
Commissioner, if, if you think we needed more time to finish that up before moving into the second, before moving into another one, we could cert, we could sure do that. Or you could sure do that.
I'd like to make a motion. The Board Accounting Commission recessed the executive session at one forty-five PM to discuss personnel management. Non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seven-five dash four-three one-nine B. One of the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy right of the employee. The executive session we conducted a breakout room using the The executive session will be conducted in a breakout room using the Zoom meeting platform. The board will come out of executive session at two PM via the Zoom meeting process. Those present will be the commissioners, county councilor Pat Henderson and HR director, Director Jamie Benz. All in favors, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion? It's been moved by Eric, seconded by I'll second it for discussion purposes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Passages to, to, two to one. So we'll just wait for Kaylee to push back into the Okay, we're, we're back in session. The chair would entertain a motion at the Board of County Commissioners recessive executive session at two oh one PM and to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seven five dash four three one B one. And the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. The executive session will be conducted in a breakout room with Zoom platform. The board will come out of the executive session at two thirty-one PM. The post-present will be John Rainbow, the county commissioners, county councilor Pat Henderson and HR director James Madison.
I'll make that motion.
Bill is seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. We're back. Chair, we entertain a motion that the Board of County Commissioners recess recessed the executive session at two thirty-three PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seven five dash four three one nine B. And the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. The executive session will be conducted in a breakout room using the Zoom platform. And the board will come out of executive session at two forty-seven. Those present will be commissioners, county councilor Pat Henderson and HR director Jamie Benz.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Paul, seconded by Commissioner Paul. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Back to the executive session. Is John on here, Jamie?
I don't see him, but I just asked if he could be. I haven't heard back from him yet.
Pat, do you have any updates for us this week?
Your mood, Pat?
Yeah, it mutes when we go back and forth. The letters for the the Heritage Trust Fund grant, there were two letters that, that MoCan had received and those were from the city of Atchison and from the Atchison County Historical Society. With your solicitations, we've received nine additional letters. Benedictine College, Blishmize, Atchison Area Chamber of Commerce, the city of Effingham, the city of Muskota, Exchange Bank, Farm Bureau, MGP Ingredients. And I, I wrote a letter and maybe they want to leave that out, but in addition, Commissioner Bauer mentioned that the Sisters of Mount St. Scholastica had mentioned that they had had prepared one as well. I think they mailed theirs. And that probably is going to go to the, the county clerk. And I've sent an email to her to, to verify, but I just sent it over the, the lunch hour, so I don't, I haven't heard, I haven't checked my email to see if she responded, but anyway, we'll make sure that that one's handled. And I'm, we'll go ahead and submit these, these additional nine letters to, to MoCan to be included with the grant application, which I think is, it goes in early next week. And I'll send, when my, with the email that I send to them, I'll send a copy of the letters so you can each see the letters. So that's all I have.
Have you heard anything from any KES with the oh nuisance ordinances things?
Yeah, we not since my last email with you. I'd suggested that we have a Zoom meeting with the inspectors. They have sent me information. I think I could file two of those cases. I was kind of trying to think to myself whether it's better to just have them, you know, pull the Band-Aid off all at once and have all of the cases at the same time or to kind of approach it in a piecemeal fashion. I kind of think it's better to do them all together, but on the other hand, I don't want these to get too old, so I, I any direction, any advice you have or direction you'd like to see me do?
Not, not particularly, just, you know, kind of keep it current, keep it, you know, a couple of those had gotten pigeonholed, I guess, because of the COVID thing. And now that they're kind of being worked on again, I was just wondering if any KES has been responsive to you and, and follow their recommendations.
Every time I have ever sent an email, Martha responds. I've, I've never been ignored by them, but getting the, the reports took a little, took a little time, but of course she wasn't preparing those. But I do have the reports on the, the Country Club property and on Mr. Garrison's property, which is the one that you hear about from time to time from the neighbor.
And we had a good move with them, I guess.
Well, do you, you want them all filed together or go ahead and file the, those two and and then file more when they, when we're ready?
Eric's most involved with it, so.
It, it doesn't make me any difference, Pat. I, I'd, I'd leave that up to you. I mean, on if it's easier to do one at a time, maybe with scheduling and not have to, like the tax sale, you have to do everything and get it ready and have all at once, so it's all or nothing, so I'd leave that up to you, Pat. However you prefer to do it.
Okay, I'll, I'll take one more, one more talk with them and we'll.
The one you said country club, that's the one across from Highland Community? Up there, the, the trader houses, yeah. I have been getting more complaints on that. Individual called and said that they heard that they could do a, the fire department could do a prescribed burn on that and they wondered why we didn't do this burning. And I says, well, that would be between the rural fire department and the property owner. And we don't burn properties off like that. Plus the, the tall weeds that are ten foot tall, it really wouldn't burn them. It would just burn through the, the base and scorched some leaves, but there was no, there's no avenue for us to do a prescribed burn.
Yeah, those, those training things that they used to do a lot, I, I understand now with, that environmental concerns with asphalt shingles, et cetera, that they have curtailed that significantly, but I'm not saying that it can't be done, but I don't know. I, it's been a long time since I've seen an article or seen that somebody did one of those.
I used to be on the rural fire department and I, they do CRP grasses and things like that. Pasture land, again, all asphalt shingles, tires. Any standing structures have to be secured and protected. So I, I think the, the hope was that they, we had light a fire and it would burn everything off of the property, but that can't be done and that, that would be up to a fire district. I believe that's Shannon Fire District.
Yeah, I think it would be.
Anything else, Pat? I think I think we're at the end of our meeting. You guys ready to adjourn or?
I guess we'll go to Plan B on a decision on on that.
The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at two fifty-six PM.
Also move.
It's been moved by Commissioner Dahl, seconded by Commissioner Paul. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned for the tenth. We'll have a meeting next week to remind everybody.
We, will we have to maybe have impromptu meetings or if well, I can't say.
If the need arises, but, but yeah, you can call a special meeting. If the need arises.
We're available, right? Okay. I'll see you guys in a couple weeks.